We're calling to meet an order.
But you said Kevin's coming in. Kevin's coming.
Have we had an implication by Commissioner Ashworth?
About as. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come and work for the city. We just thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us. And we just request that you be with these leaders of this country and protect them and help them in their decision-making process. And we ask that you help us in our decision-making process tonight, Lord. We thank you so much again, for it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Here.
Commissioner Thorne? Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Mack?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Here.
Commissioner Skeen?
Here.
Commissioner Saffley?
All right, has everybody had an opportunity to approve the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Are there motions to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mack?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Skeen?
Aye.
All right, the first item is PL 1856, Highway 51 Mini Storage Varian. Request for a variance for gravel parking lot. Specific property is located on the east side of Highway 51, north of Memphis Street in Section 21, Township 3, Range 8, and is owned in C2. Morgan Falls, representing Highway 51 Mini Storage LLC. Ms. Kadoshi, present the staff plan and reporting comments.
Yes, sir. This is PL 1856. As you mentioned, it's a variance request to allow a gravel parking lot additionally with no curb and gutter. Morgan Falls is here tonight representing the application. The property does have an approved conditional use for the next 10 years to approve the site for mini storage and associated outside storage. The property's owned in C2, and the plan to create this lot was approved on July 19, 2022, and the setbacks are listed in your staff report. This is old business as it was tabled at the last meeting. There's a request for more information to be associated with the staff report. The applicant did provide an existing exhibit, or a new exhibit, to go with his existing ones. And as you'll see, there's a detail on the gravel type listed on the bottom left-hand portion of that Exhibit 1. CR 610 is proposed for the first three inches, and number 57 crush stone for the next six inches is proposed. And I think that was one of the questions the commission had, was the gravel type and the dust type. And I'll let the applicant explain that a little more, but that's the detail he's provided. Then also, you can see where there is no curb and gutter, where it's proposed to end and then begin again on the entrance, primarily so the site can sheet flow to the detention pond on the west side of the site. And there are no proposed changes to the existing fence around the property. It's still masonry. And we did get a question about the back of the building, and the conditional use was approved originally to use the back of the building as the opaque barrier with the fence. And so the fence will join the back of the building, the back of the building will continue, and then the fence will pick back up. And so we did confirm that was previously approved. I'll read these for the record, the next two applications of the approval or denial criteria, that the special conditions and circumstances that exist are peculiar to the land structures or buildings involved and are not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. The literal enforcement of these provisions of these standards would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties within the same district under the terms of this ordinance. The special conditions or circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant or not based upon economic considerations. And granting this variance would request it would not confer on the applicant any special privilege that's otherwise denied by the ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. If approved, we did add a condition that a certificate of development and building permits be pulled to go to the next step of this process. We did provide proposed motions to approve, deny, or table in your staff report. And with this, you are the final governing authority for this decision unless it's appealed. And there's a 10-day appeal period to appeal the decision tonight. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Kadoshi? When applicant, please come forward and state your name and address in its entirety.
Morgan Falls, with Rockford Engineering. My address is 6167 Kerbo Lane, Olive Branch, Mississippi.
I'm Rachel Param with Noah's Art Development. My address is 30435 US Highway 201, Full Verdi, Texas, 78163.
And yeah, I mean, obviously, we spent a lot of time talking about this last time. We went, you know, went over the drainage aspect. I was, I think, I think we kind of got to a place where everybody, you know, the flow, the sheet flow flowing from the east to the west of the property and its kind of sheet flow across the gravel was, was pretty well considered and discussed. And we got to a place where I think that was pretty clear. We did add the detail, and I added the drainage runoff numbers. I know it's not a big deal for a lot of people here, but just kind of to show the difference in the time of concentration and the flows that it would slow down during the course while that was gravel. But I know the gravel detail, like wanting to know exactly how it'd be with this one, the proposed would be a 57 stone, which is a fairly large rock across the bottom, with the CR 610, which is a more of a mixture on the top. And not having like any kind of soil cement or hardened permanent service at any point in there, which would allow for, if utility work needs to be done, or if we come back as we pivot based upon the community needs, like keeping the soil cement and everything out of the gravel section was a reason for it not being in there as it's shown currently. And then I think the other, one of the other questions that we really had at that point in time was about, there were some questions asked about, is it going to be covered and is it going to be just open? And at the time, it was a bit up in the air. Not up in the air, we just hadn't fully 100% decided. And the current plan is for it to be open with no cover park or anything like that. It would just be gravel, open parking. But it allows for the ability for future development as the needs of the community are kind of revealed to us as to whether it's the office or the climate-controlled storage or the RV parking itself that becomes the primary demand. And I guess, do you want to add to that right this second, or would you rather just?
I mean, that's, that's absolutely true. That's the reason for the gravel is it's environmentally, it's going to be better for us to be able to remove the gravel and repurpose the gravel where we build our building pads. We also don't have, we know we could do a 30,000-plus square foot building, but if we have an office warehouse design with it and the storage design, then it changes the building's design, we could back the building up to the curb line. This is another reason why we don't want to have the curb and gutter there yet, because we don't have a solidified site plan for that. Really, the first phase of this building is going to tell us a lot. If the community loves the office warehouse, but they'd rather have it be climate-controlled office warehouse, so there's other options we can add to that. But the building usage is always going to be what's currently there right now. It's not going to change. It's not going to be something else or turn into, you know, we can't sell that pad site. There's no access to it. So that was the purpose of the gravel. It's still, it's a parking lot. It's not really as drivable, so they park their facility, they park their, their vehicle, and then they remove it and they bring it back. So it's really for a temporary use, but it's only meant to be temporary so that the property doesn't sit there and do nothing.
What do you mean by office warehouse? You mean like the elevation that you face?
Yes. So the office warehouse where it's an office, so you have an office space that's climate-controlled, and then that's dry-walled in, and that's the glazing in the front, and then you have the warehouse space, which is the door. It's a new storage amenity that we're adding to all of our facilities currently. It's been a big hit because it's affordable office space for people who can't afford the retail spaces in front of grocery stores or downtown. This offered, this is the opportunity for people who are living and working here, who maybe have to go to Memphis, they can bring their business here, or they can just be tenants. They can even be just regular storage tenants where they want to have an office, they want to park their vehicle there, they want to show off their cars to their friends. I've even had a man cave situation once where two guys came in and they bought both the units next to each other, and they made it their man cave, turned it into a nice office space with TVs and stuff, and they parked their sports cars there, and they worked on them. So it's multifaceted here. It can be used for commercial use, or it can be used for private use as a normal tenant.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with the design you're talking about. I actually had an office myself in Nashville.
Oh, awesome.
With the same concept. But that's, I mean, we're not talking about the office warehouse space tonight. I think the issue is the gravel.
Well, but I think that that kind of sounds like a lot more traffic in and out.
I think you would have a lot more traffic with some of those because what I've seen personally when I've had a space is, so you're talking about your office warehouse space, you know, with potentially a business, well, you may have a landscaping truck or a construction truck where they're going to park those heavy trucks and then get in them every day, in and out every day. More than, I think the time, the question came up last time about how many in-and-outs or were for noise and dust concerns to the residential area is, I think, somebody said one or two a month. I think, I think that's.
So in a year, a year span, there's usually four months out of the year that people are moving their vehicles. And to be honest, half of our tenants leave their stuff there, and they just leave it. They never come back and see it, they just pay on automatic pay, and they just leave that vehicle there. And you have the other half that's using it as recreational vehicles or work vehicles. That's the mix we're talking about. When you look at a yearly average, there's about four to three months out of the year that they're actually using the vehicles, and when they take their vehicles, they're taking them somewhere, and then they bring them back for a period of time. So really, if you look at the year logistics, it's two a month almost coming in and out. But just, I would like to clarify, is there an exhibit on here that shows the actual gravel area versus what's not gravel? Like a paving section?
The original exhibit.
Okay, right here.
Yes.
Does this show up on here? Kind of. Kind of, does it?
The southernmost, about the third of the property.
So the office warehouse section, the paving is paved. So the office warehouse people do not have access to the gated climate control and storage facility behind it. They only have access to the front edge right there, and that is fully paved. So the traffic that we're talking about is literally the people who are coming in to rent a parking space, parking the vehicle, and then leaving, and then coming back later on to either pick up the vehicle, work on the vehicle, or so forth. But it's not a driving lot where you're seeing people leave every day from the lot is what I'm getting at for the dust control. I think, is that the dust control question?
Well, just some dust, and then there were some concerns from the citizens. It was your last time.
But any vehicle.
Also the noise of vehicle driving on gravel versus asphalt, you know, with it being surrounded on three sides from residential area.
I don't have any science about the noise of the gravel. I know that we definitely haven't had issues on our other facilities with the gravel. And like I said, the gravel is there for a temporary usage. We want to keep the property working for us so that we can afford the next phase of this development. To have this much acreage just standing there waiting to be developed, this helps us fill in that gap, so it's actually rentable tenants that we have coming in. But any heavy vehicles that are doing traffic, like daily traffic, will be on the paved areas, including our dumpster area and everything as well. And then the future of this project is to pave the entire thing, absolutely. And as I think Morgan mentioned in the last meeting, we will have to direct flow later on, but we also don't know if we're going to back off the fence line or if what we're going to do with that property or build a building up to it, because we're going to change the design as we do this, we run out this first phase. So the whole purpose of the gravel is that it's there for a temporary usage, and ultimately the RV boat, they don't, they're not going to pay the cost to do a building, so they're paying for a 14-by, or 12-by-14 spot, but they're paying 18 cents a square foot versus the storage in the office warehouse paying $1.20 to $2.00 a square foot, so they can afford the construction costs. The gravel is helping us with this, because we can't charge them $1.20 for a 12-by-14 space.
It just, we have several examples recently of, you know, storage facilities being built in the city, and also another one for RV storage. I don't so much personally have any issue with, I understand, you know, the drainage and stuff, but the curb and gutter. We have examples of allowing, allowing the variance for curb and gutter for drainage flow for another storage facility in this area.
Okay.
Like just a few months ago. But the gravel was not allowed for that application. So we just, I think a lot of these examples of the criteria that Austin gave us for approval or denial is, does it meet the approval process, in my opinion?
Was it temporary for that facility?
No.
Was it permanent?
I mean, they're going to asphalt it.
Right. So, but they're probably using as permit parking spaces with no further phases to the facility? How much square footage? I'm just asking a question.
I don't know this.
Okay. Because that's the whole purpose of this section, is that it's not going to be like that for the next 10 years. We plan on doing an additional phase, but having to come in and rip out concrete and then redo that would be, wouldn't be cost-effective for the project, and it, we can actually repurpose the gravel if we need to versus the concrete. It's sending it off.
Economics, we can't take into consideration.
Right.
But, and also a variance stays with the property forever. So we can't give you a variance and say, hey, you can do this for two years. We, if we approve a variance, it stays with the property for the length of the property. Am I wrong about that?
We talked about that, Morgan and I did, and that's true. It does stay with the property. There is a catch here to where we have a conditional use approval for 10 years, but that is separate, and so the variance would be.
Is there a way to, if we add a building or add any other horizontal structure to this or vertical structure to this, that we would have to change the paving to it? Because we wouldn't put a building and have gravel drives around it, because that would be a problem. Now I've got traffic, constant traffic going around the building, especially if it's an office warehouse, like you mentioned, and I wouldn't want my tenants to be in gravel either, because that's not the class of facility we're trying to represent here. But if it's a temporary use, and if we add another structure to it, we have to change the paving. Is there a way to do that with the conditional use in the variance?
The addition of a building, it would require an amendment to the conditional use. So like when, because it changes the site and what was y'all have approved. So there would be a trigger, but I don't know if that, but this is for a variance.
This is.
That's right.
And I think the gentleman here, sorry, Mr. Falls, you had said last time this, the ground was going to be prepped for future building use, like you were going to treat the design and the engineering for, with, for a building where you wouldn't have to go in and redo that, right? Is what you, I thought you said.
Right. We're talking, I think at that point in time, we're talking mostly about the pond sizing aspect of things. So from a, from the pond sizing aspect, it would be sized as if it was all asphalt, the entire, you know, the maximum usable amount of the site, just so that way in case anybody ever came back later and made improvements, you wouldn't have to increase the pond size at that point in time. That, that was, but that, that is a part of the consideration, is that whatever, whatever the long-term use is that it's capable of having, that the pond would be sized to be able to handle, handle those issues. It would just be in the short term without the curb and gutter, where, because we're completely surrounded by existing vegetation and the stormwater conveyance that it's going to flow directly into, that it would be gravel to, for those, this condition where we're going into that, that vegetated area as opposed to concentrating the flow and piping it.
If I may. The plan is here to also make it affordable for our customers as well. That's the, if I, I couldn't raise rents on my customers with RV boat because they wouldn't be able to pay for that, or they haven't in our markets, and I don't think they do it in this market either when we did our market study. The plan here, and I think that if it can trigger it with the building, because there's, I think by the current design we have, there's no way at this class of facility, I'm not going to have an office warehouse without being paved or a storage building without it being paved. So if there's a way to say, okay, this is a temporary use, or if it does trigger that when we go to put another building in for permitting, can we then say, okay, well, it's going to be paved? It's just, this is a very temporary situation so that we can grow with the community, be part of the community, and that's what all of our facilities do do. That's what we're specialized in. We come into markets like this all the time. My own current home is like this, where Full Verdi is being encroached by San Antonio and Austin on both sides, and they want to maintain the integrity, but they want to allow developers to come in. I think in order to do that, we've got to be able to grow with the community, and thus, having this much property and phasing it, we can actually say, okay, as the community changes, as people's lives change, we can now add units at a facility that they can utilize. So if there's a way to do that, Austin, at all, because I have done that on two other projects where they're saying, okay, it's gravel for now, but when you come back, when you do your permit for your Phase 2 or Phase 3, it has to be paved. And I'm 100% agreeance with that, because I completely understand what we're trying to go for here. I don't want my office warehouse tenants who are paying $2.00 a square foot to be driving on gravel either.
I mean, I don't know, Austin may be better. I think you could build the buildings down with the current approval and just not do the boat RV parking lot right now. That could be your second phase.
So that's the, so that's, the purpose of the second phase is to, is to adjust the unit mixes accordingly to how people are renting in the area. So we can also do up the current buildings, but for us to do this in a feasibility, purpose of this and the economic feasibility of way of doing this is to phase the building. So, and it will be owned by, I mean, somebody who's in the community, and there's no, we have no, there's no purpose for us to come in here and make it harder for everybody else or to affect our neighbors. That's not what we want to do. Those are the people who are renting from us, so I don't want to hurt them. I don't want to affect them. I don't think the gravel, being as temporary as it is and as low traffic and impact that it has, will do that, because we're still going to be having, we're still going to have the, we're obeying all the variances for the fence, the fence regulations, we're going to have that boxed in, it'll be the masonry fence, so you'll have a buffer there as well. But I want to stress the temporary usage of this, because that's not long-term effect for us. We don't want to have just RV boat there. RV boat there is a place saver for us on all of our developments, actually.
I don't have anything else to add. It's just with the variance, it stays with it. There's.
Yeah, and I think.
Under tonight's application, it's.
I think what, the solution everybody's looking for is a definite answer of how this is going to be permanent. And the only thing I can offer that's an absolute truth is in 10 years, this application has to come back to you for an approval. If nothing changes in 10 years, that the conditional use needs to come back, and there may be some leverage there or something to say, this needs to be paved now, but the direct correlation of this gravel, to say it's going to be gone in five years if a new building comes, they would need a plan amendment, and I would, I would assume the board would consider that it would need to be paved at that point. Just, and it sounds like she's offering that, but.
And question, also, we have to change our drainage, because it's gravel right now, but we, if we pave it, we have to put a curb and gutter to bring the water to the detention pond on that side. So we have to add it. We don't have a choice. Even civil-wise, drainage-wise, we have to pave that section if we add a building, because now we're sheet flowing off the river gutters, going to gravel, it's going to section off, it's got to go back to the pond. So in order for us to drain that south side, we've got to add that. In order to do that, we've got to pave it.
The only problem that I have with the application is that, I mean, none of the, none of the criteria is really met to grant variance. I mean, there's no special conditions and circumstances that are superior to the land. You're not being denied any rights commonly enjoyed by other properties. You know, this is all economics, and we're really not supposed to take that into account.
I agree. Any other questions for the applicant?
So if we, if we can't gravel this, then it's, it'll just sit there with grass, and that's our problem, is that we, we really need that income so we can do the additional phase later on and pave it then. So if we just leave the property there grassed and not worked at all, that's the other option for us, and I don't know if that would be even feasible for us to do a project at that point. That's our problem, is this really kind of helps us, okay, we want to come into the community, we want to be part of the community. It's, we're providing people an opportunity to have businesses locally here that are affordable, they can utilize it. I'd like to be a part of this community. I absolutely want to be in Hernando, and I want to work with Jason on this and expand this project. It would just make it almost unfeasible to do all of the other things, too, if we can't add that little bit of net rentable that we need for that space, because then I just have property sitting there doing nothing. So, and I know as commissioners, that's, you're looking at logistics, but that, I don't think we're harming any of the, the issues, like especially later on, we do add the building. I don't think we're doing anything harm to the property or to the neighbors in any effect.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So anybody in a supporter against this item, please come forward and state your name and address in this.
Jason Canada, 75, shoemaker, Memphis, Tennessee. And, I don't know, I guess I'm trying to speak outside, you know, think outside the box here, because we definitely have some, some land that we need to do something with somehow, some way. Austin, can you run, can we run through those three criteria again?
For the approval?
Yeah, for the, yeah, for the variance.
The special conditions and circumstances that exist are peculiar to the land structures or buildings involved and are not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. The literal enforcement of these provisions of these standards would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties within the same district under the terms of the ordinance. The special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant and are not based upon economic considerations. That the granting of the variance would not confer on the applicant any special privilege that's otherwise denied by the ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district.
What's the, I guess, moving forward, what's the, what would be the appeal? How would that look like?
What would happen is, if it's denied, you have 10 days to.
Appeal.
Appeal to the mayor and board of all of them.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
If you've got anything else.
That's all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else in support against this item?
Oh, I'm, yeah. He's all supportive.
I'm supportive of the vote.
That was why you were out there.
All right. Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I make a motion to deny variance request by Morgan Falls, representing Highway 51 Mini Storage LLC to allow gravel parking lot with no curb and gutter, as shown in the attached exhibits on the property located on the east side of US 51, north of Illinois Central Railroad Overpass, and south of North Parkway in Section 12, Township 3, south, Range 8, west, based upon the following findings, A through D.
Can I second? Austin.
Commissioner Jordan?
Nay.
Commissioner Max?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Nay.
Commissioner Stone?
Nay.
Commissioner Sken?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Nay.
So the motion to deny this item did not pass, so we have, uh, another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve variance requested by Morgan Falls representing Highway 51 Mini Storage LLC to allow gravel parking lot with no curb and gutter as shown in the attached exhibits for the property located on the east side of US Highway 51, north of the Illinois Central Railroad Overpass and south of North Parkway in Section 12 Township 3 South Range 8 West based upon the findings in A, B, C, and D. With the understanding that should any structure be placed on the, uh, area included in the variance, uh, that that, they will have to come back to the board, to the board of question for, reconsideration of the, of the service.
Can I second?
Commissioner Jordan?
Aye.
Commissioner Max?
Nay.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Aye.
Commissioner Sken?
Nay.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes. All right. So the motion to approve this variance was approved. The next item is PL 1857 Highway 51 Mini Storage Request for a variance for a metal facade. This subject property is located on east side of Highway 51, north of Memphis Street in Section 28 Township 3 Range 8 and is Zone C2. Morgan Falls representing Highway 51 Mini Storage LLC. Mr. Kadoz, you present the staff plan report and comment.
Yes, sir. This is PL 1857 and it's a sister application to the, um, one just considered. On the same piece of property, it's a separate variance to allow a metal facade on, uh, the building B as described in the exhibit. Um, the property is Zone C2 and the commercial design standards do exclude metal facades. This was tabled for the last meeting, uh, with a request for more detail on the elevations. And so on your, um, exhibits provided, there was some confusion on the west versus the east elevation. And so as you can see on that north elevation, uh, the portion of the metal facade would be on the eve of the roof above the doors. Um, then extending to the, the office coming in. And so it's, um, as described by the applicant, more of an accent piece. But, um, you can see the elevations, north, south, east, and west have been corrected in staff report. Um, notably the east elevation, building B, um, that back fence against the abutting residential is proposed to be a brick facade to join with the masonry screen fence as required by the conditional use approval. Um, the southern elevation of building A and building B are where the most prominent, um, metal pieces are. But the elevations you see here have been corrected from the previous exhibit. So I've got those and I've got the previous, um, submittal. That just kind of shows you the comparison of what, I think what generated some of the confusion last time. Along with the sight line of what we would see from Highway 51. Um, the discussion criteria approval or denial is the same. For brevity, I'll, I'll skip that, but it's the same as the last application. Um, and I did propose, um, motions to approve, deny, or table as you see fit in your staff report. Uh, and Morgan Falls is here representing this application as well tonight. I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any question, Mr. Kadoz? The applicant, please come forward and state your name and address.
Morgan was my representative apparently, but here he is again. Uh, my name is Rachel Param, address 30435 US Highway 21 North, Bullverde, Texas. And I am the developer for this project along with Jason Canada. Do you mind pulling up the elevation? Thank you. And I also have photos from the site too, if we need to see those as well. They're right here. Okay, so the biggest, well, my biggest problem with the site is that we are not visible from the road. We have quality cabinets and then we have heavy vegetation on the south side where there's a huge drainage ditch where the water falls into, which both of those commercial buildings do feed into on both sides of it. We also have heavy vegetation against the residential on that side, which we do plan on leaving, absolutely. We are going to abide by the fence ordinances, which is going to be the precast masonry fence that goes around the building. Also goes around the RV boat parking area. So we aren't, we're not asking for any variance on the fencing whatsoever. So it will still be where you can't see into the buildings, right? So it's the same as, the north elevation is also the same as the south elevation technically, because you've got a fenced-in project. So when you see on this is what you're not seeing is that there's a fence gravel parking over. There's a fence. There's also a masonry fence there. So it's the same fence that we show on the north side. So you're not going to see the side of the building. The reason we're doing this, it's really to break up the buildings. I've seen a lot of the, the brick facades. I grew up and I visited friends in Sugar Land all the time where they just had brick buildings and there was no accent pieces to it. I think an accent piece and transition piece looks really nice. It also helps that we can afford these materials in the back where nobody sees it. And that's a big thing for us. We don't want, it's not visible to the people from the road. It's not visible to the residents. It's just visible to the people who are leasing from us. What is majority of the brick, the masonry look or the brick look is absolutely the frontage. Even though you can't see us, the main office building, if you don't mind, yes, right there. So the main office building is heavy glazing and heavy brick with a standing seam roof. And then we do have overhangs. So even the steel pieces that you see in the overhangs above the office warehouse sections, so where the glazing in the door, that piece above it is steel, but there's an overhang where you don't see the steel either from the roof. Because we want to provide a covered area for people to walk along that sidewalk path to get to the main office or to the, the shared restrooms that's in the vestibule area. So really what you're going to see is a brick building from one portion of the road right before you get to the, right in between the gas station and quality cabinets. And that's that main office, which is heavy glazing and heavy brick. So we, we're just asking for the ability to utilize materials that we know are affordable economically. We can get them quickly and put them on the building for tenants that only see the building. But you have to have a gate code to get in to see those sides of the building. So that's, that's why I'm asking for that. And I think we did give, uh, material percentages as well. And then the future buildings, like we talked about on the gravel road, anything that's facing the road will, that's frontage will be brick. It'll be the same as the office warehouse. It'll be the same look, same design. Anything that's behind a gate will be using like the steel piers. But really it's only the steel piers that you see and the doors that's already metal. And then the metal of the roof's canopy. But that's it. And that's usually just seen by the people who are leasing from us. But anything like if we do office warehouses where it's wrapped around the building, you'll see the same frontage again too on the third, on the second phase. Because it's got the look.
Building B on the north elevation has no brick on the north elevation.
Right. Because you can't see it from the road and from residents because it's covered with the, um, the fence side.
But you can see the, the top of it.
Top of it.
The top of which buildings?
Building B.
The building B. Right. So what we don't have on here is the heavy landscaping that we also provide as part of that coverage. We, we are required to have there because we are facing residential. I think there's a landscaping plan too. So we're going to meet all landscaping requirements, all fencing requirements, and it'll be heavily guarded. But really it's this, it's like this much steel versus like this much more brick on the buildings. And really the only big main steel building that we have is a building that you have to have a gate code. You have to be a renter. You have to get onto the property. Everything else that is public access is mainly brick except for the main piece right there where the canopy covers it. And that's just usually the transition effect for that canopy.
And what you're referring to like though is like on the south elevations, that you, that's not visible except from, I guess, that gravel lot.
Yes.
Because of that fence.
And also we have a slope change there too, right? So it's going to have the same fence as the north side. I just wanted you to see the buildings clearly if we could. But that's only, so the gate right here, the gate where that, the people are standing right there in the corner of that canopy, that's the gate there too. So there's two gates on this property. So for you to see the side of the building fully, you'd have to be a tenant leasing from us. And we have heavy vegetation on that side, which I do have pictures of the south side. The south side is heavily vegetated because we have an entire, what is that ditch called?
The stormwater conveyance.
The stormwater conveyance, which has really pretty trees that we're not touching. So.
I might run out of ports.
Well, don't, I don't want to make it difficult. I don't want to break the system.
Okay.
Any questions for the applicant?
I, I don't, I didn't, I didn't see the vegetation plan or anything. The trees, do y'all have a, I mean, all I see is the trees on, I guess. Yeah, I guess it's that, maybe the one above that.
And that's the architect throwing trees in there to give it some color. But I, our, on this side, especially on the east elevation side, we do not have as much vegetation, natural vegetation there. And you can see those houses. I went there today, walked it, saw it, took pictures of it and was like, oh yeah, we can, we have got to put grass here. But on this side even, you can't see except for maybe the canopy roof, which we all have canopy roofs out here. I've seen a lot out here. But that's still the masonry wall. So where you see heavy, like if anybody, the neighborhoods that don't have that vegetation that's natural, like the south side does, where the gravel parking is, we are going to have the masonry wall that backs to the building. So that building wall is masonry and we also have trees planting there too, a bunch of them.
Yes. So, I mean, Austin can, but it's a large deciduous tree with an opening height of 50 feet that is placed every 60 feet along the perimeter of a budding residential, I believe, with three evergreen trees with an opening height between 25 and 40 feet. That'll be in between, uh, the large deciduous trees. And then I believe there'll also be on the north side, there'll be a section where there is, there is a vegetative screen in lieu of the masonry. When you get down where the driveway is, like in front of the building face.
What does that vegetative screen look like?
It's shrubs. They're, pretty, I mean, there are handful of options that you have that meet it, but they're, they're planted five foot center or three foot center. So
How high, how high are we?
Oh, they, they have to be a minimum of eight feet. They have to match the fence line.
They're, they're going to reach eight feet, I guess, maturity?
Yeah. Well, yes. Because I mean, it is acting as the opaque barrier in that location as opposed to
I'll, I'll say that, that's my concern is the north side, I think is going to be more visible.
Okay. So, well, hold on a sec. Because we're not having a vegetating screen like that. It's in front of the gate that that happens. We have the trees there and then we have the natural vegetation on the north side. It was the east side that has very little natural vegetation. But we also, can we show the north side? Oh, yes. Thank you.
But, uh, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically the spacing that's required by the, by the code as a part of the buffer, buffer yard requirement.
So this east side, that's, was my biggest concern until we put a building and a masonry wall up against it and we have all the trees going in the background. The north side has a little bit more vegetation, but we are adding more of those nice berms that you like so much and that you like so much apparently. The what? Oh, sorry. And then we have a masonry wall too. We also have the precast masonry wall on that side as well. So it's, it's double screened on the north side. And then the south side has a precast masonry wall with natural vegetation and then our own vegetation that's going in as well. And it's pretty thick on the south side. I mean, there was, you can't even see the houses behind it. But the berms come up to the fence because we have to have a fenced-in property. That's just security reasons. We don't have it. It's not just going to be a brush. I can't have that. I have to have actual fencing. So it'll be the precast masonry fence, which is, we agreed to, absolutely.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Would you be willing to put the trees on the north, uh, side closer off-center than?
Well, I really, that's why I'm, I'm sad we don't have the landscaping plan as part of the exhibit because it's on there.
I feel like that would, that would, well, he said that they were the minimum requirements.
No. So the, the, what is it? The bush is our, the berm?
No, the buffer yard.
Okay.
The thirty-foot buffer yard requirement.
He's putting trees on that side too. I mean, I was shocked by the landscaping plan. That we've got trees on every side of this property, including the natural vegetation that's there.
I think it was this one. I understand. I just feel like you'd have less metal facade.
Oh, yeah. You've got the trees.
Invisible if you had more trees. Now, it may be a few years before they've fully grown in, but.
And my plan is not to be a bad neighbor. So that, and their houses do back right up to it. I mean, and that's, so we will add the vegetation there what we needed. The south side, I was just blown away by how much natural vegetation is there. So I wasn't really concerned about that side. I was more concerned when I went and took pictures today about the east side, which we are heavily vegetating and have a heavy masonry wall in the back of the building. So it's a fortress facility where you cannot see into it. That's what we call the facilities. You just don't see the doors. So we fortress the facility with the precast masonry fence, the masonry wall that's back to building B. And then we also have a vegetation, heavy vegetation, which just looks kind of light on that side. But he's got a berm that kind of runs to the, to the gate on the north side. And then we add more trees and then the natural vegetations that's currently there. So you've got the masonry fence, their landscape requirements, and the natural vegetation.
What is that spacing, the tree spacing? Is it 50?
It's described in the type 35 buffer yard. I'll pull it up for us.
It's the type 30.
Is it 30? Okay. Um, 30 feet wide. It's these planted together. So
Yeah, it's a mixture.
It's
You feel like, and you've got, you've got tons.
It's, yeah, you plant them on triangles within that 30 feet. So it may be 15 foot on centers for one type of tree. And then you space it halfway recessed for the evergreen shrubs. And there's a, it's kind of complicated because you can't do a mixture of things, like a berm plus this type of plant in lieu of these things, but
I have a picture of it on one of our facilities if you want to see it. But, because we, we do this on a lot of our facilities. Because especially when you're backed up to the HOA and the homeowners. So
I like the idea of a berm and I like the idea, I mean, I like how on that one page you've got the sight line. But I feel like it, it's behind the building, but I do, that's my concern is that north corner, you're just going to see metal facade on that north corner from Highway 51.
Oh, no. No. Because we, you can't see, what you can see, the office sticks out on the site plan. That's what you can see from 51. I was more concerned about our neighbors seeing it versus 51 because you can't see us.
The office on the, on the building A, but not on building B.
Yes. But building B is behind building A. So
Still, it's still be visible from the sight line.
Can I, um, so the way that this traffic is directed is that building sticks out with parapets and everything. So it's actually 3D'd out more. And when you drive by it, and I have photos of that, you see the office building. You may see a graze of like a roof line, but you're not going to see building B from that side. Especially the gas station and with the berms you've got in front of the gate now. And you've got the trees behind that. So I don't think you're going to see that building. And if you do, it's like a glimpse of it, but you're really going to see the office. And if you do, it's like a glimpse of it, but you're really gonna see the office and the glazing and the brick.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty, because we're sensitive off the road, it's a pretty tight angle.
You'd have to be looking at it the whole, like, way down, quality cabinet, too.
It'd be a lot more visible to the, the lots that back up to.
Any other questions for the applicant?
My personal opinion, there's a ton of metal already, you know, you got all the roll-up doors and everything too. It's not like there's a ton of brick to put on.
A lot of glazing and brick on that frontage of that building. Uh, and in fact, the, the brick we're using comes from the area. We've got, we've priced it out, it's, works really well. I like it because it transitions in color, it looks really nice, um, adds texture to the building. Glazing also counts, right? So is that part of the?
No, window glazing is not, that you're allowed to do that.
Okay, we're, so we're allowed to do that. So, but you don't really, but you can't see the office warehouse. That's my other issue with this property, is that I would like to be more visible, because then you could see my entire business if you drove by.
That's a selling point. I mean, as far as we're concerned, coming to us.
But, but, that's the, that's why we showed the sightline, is we have to have a signage that shows who's the businesses there, and it's gotta be at front and center, because we are so far back behind this property, and our frontage is completely taken up except for the office. So that's why the office is so heavy. And that's why it's also a parapet, and it looks like it's a two-tier versus the rest of the building, which is a single.
Right here, yeah. That's a new gas station. Where it used to be a car lot and auto wash shop. He's asking about the businesses just to the north. I think that's where those two automotive shops used to be now.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, it's, it's an Amaco gas station that's just being built.
There used to be some automotive repair shops.
It's a, the white gas station, is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone in support or against this item, please come forward and state your name and address.
Uh, Jason Canada, 75 Sheemaker, Memphis, Tennessee, uh, 38103. And, uh, just kinda zoom out a little bit, uh, I'm for it. Uh, and, um, I mean, we're looking at, you know, it's gonna be a major investment in this corridor, and I think will be, uh, an asset to that area. I mean, I grew up around the corner from it, so I, I know it intimately. Um, but, uh, I think will be a, uh, you know, an asset to that, that little growth corridor there, so I'm for it.
Anyone else in support against this item? Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I'll make a motion to approve a design standards variance requested by Morgan Falls, representing Highway 51 Mini Storage LLC to allow for a metal facade as reflected upon the documents in the application on property located on the east side of US Highway 51, north of the Illinois Central Railroad overpass and south of North Parkway in Section 12 Township 3 South, Range 8 West, based upon the findings in A, B, C, and D.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jordan?
Hi.
Commissioner Max?
Lee.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Commissioner Skeen?
Hi.
Motion to approve this item passes. The next item is PL 1850 Anderson C4. Request for a rezoning of 4.51 acres from A to C4. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Getwell Road and the I-269 interchange in Section 23 Township 2, Range, Township 2 South, Range 7 West. Civil Link Engineering, representing owner. Mr. Kados, will you present the, and report incoming?
Yes, sir. Uh, PL 1850, the request is to rezone 4.51 acres to C4 Plan Commercial in the, uh, property you just described. Jody Nauman's here with Civil, uh, the attorney representing the application. Civil Link was the consultant engineer on behalf of Arthur Anderson. The proposal tonight is go to C4 Plan Commercial. And so generally speaking, this is very similar to a PUD, uh, to where it's a build-to-suit application, but it's, uh, strictly commercial, there is no residential proposed. I did a description of what the C4 Plan Commercial District is in the staff report. Um, as you can see, it's a, purpose of the district is provide for modern, attractive, efficient retail, personal, and professional commercial facilities with access needs with demand located, uh, along major arterial roadways. It's surrounded by AR and A residential. Uh, this is at the intersection of Getwell and I-269 interchange. The future land use map of the city's general development plan, uh, identifies this property as mixed-use and activity, master planned, commercial. There's a, a longer description in the staff report, but, uh, generally, this is, um, for commercial, uh, development along major thoroughfares. The three criteria for zoning approval or denial, and I'll read these for the record. How the proposed amendment would conform to the general development plan, why the existing zoning district classification of the property is inappropriate or improper, and major economic, physical, or social changes occurred in the vicinity in question that were not anticipated by the general development plan and have substantially altered the basic character of the area, which makes the proposed amendment to the zoning district map appropriate. And Mr. Nauman did provide an exhibit, um, on the first page of your staff report, um, behind my section, uh, addressing each of those criteria. A little bit about the plan, generally speaking. The single use of the property is proposed as convenience store. Um, that is the only allowable use. And you'll notice in the site plan, there are gas and diesel pumps and circular access throughout the property. The applicant's not proposing any parking, uh, for freight. Uh, the only parking you see on the site would be for the retail access of the convenience store. In the project text, there is language, um, that specifically addresses the architecture of the building. And so you see the pretty unique architecture that's proposed in the building elevations. This application would be tied to that architecture if approved tonight. Um, and then the PD conditions, you can see things, um, about overnight parking, showers, large diesel nozzles. With this being incorporated to the text, that would be carried through with our plan review. So all of the, um, things you see in the PD conditions, uh, would kinda carry over to the certificate of development if and when this is approved. There's pitch requirements on the canopy and on the building itself. For utilities, um, sanitary sewer and private water is proposed right now. Uh, there are no public utilities on the north side of I-269, uh, to the scale to support a development like this, but, um, I'll let Nick speak to it a little bit more, but the, um, the proposal is to do a private onsite sewer, um, and then whatever needs to be done with the water, you'll have to engineer. It is not publicly available from, from us. I did propose motions to approve, deny, or table, uh, in your staff report based on those things. And, uh, unlike the last application, this is a recommendation going to the board, uh, and that recommendation will be heard next Tuesday on December 17th. And so this approval or denial will go forward to that December 17th meeting. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Nauman's here tonight representing the application, and I'm available if you've got any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Kados? Any other questions, Nauman, address is in town.
Thank you. Uh, Chairman Hawkins, members of the board, and, um, my name is Jody Nauman. I'm with the firm of Palmetree Nauman and Jolly, we're on West Center Street. One thing we wanna, let me, show me how to do this, just tell me which one you want first.
Let's go to, first off, let's go to the, uh, Alex's Hernando Travel Center with canopy. This will give you a general better idea of, um, what the proposed C4 is. It's essentially, I, I think the best comparison I can find is like gas stations and when you go to Madison and Ridgeland. And it's, the composite is over 80% brick on the outside. There are diesel nozzles, but again, there are no large diesel nozzles. There are, it is not a truck stop. It is, and no overnight parking. So this will give you a general idea of plan, and then we'll show a site review to show how the flow of traffic. The main reason that, uh, this, uh, application is ideal for this location is mainly is because we are immediately adjacent to I-269 and Getwell Road, which is the main arterial park, uh, drive. Austin, let's go to the, um, the anti-parking exhibit. Now, with regard to trucks and commercial traffic that are coming on, they would be, exit off of Get, off of, uh, 269 to Getwell, and would enter, unless, can we increase the speed to two and a half on that? Speed and go to two, two times. I can't talk that slow. And so what we would do, we'd turn in on the, uh, north entrance. If it was a commercial truck such as, uh, an 18-wheeler, it would go and park and fuel at the, uh, the diesel nozzles there. This also includes mainly recreational farm equipment that's not in the area. Uh, we have a, a legitimate need for RVs to be fueled in this area. If you would note that immediately upon refueling, they'll have to exit, and there's no location for a truck to park along term. And that is exclusive to the design of the property, and Nick will go into that in his engineering plan in a few minutes. It, but what, it will basically be an, an in-and-out. And the outflow is to then proceed to the southern entrance on to Getwell Road. And to immediately head south back to 269. As to northbound traffic, that is, uh, I think about a mile and a half is the city limits of, of South Haven, that is a no-truck route. So they will not result in any increased commercial drought up Getwell Road and then back. Thank you, Nick. And so that will basically show the immediate access. According to MDOT's, uh, website, at the present time, we're having 33,000 average trips per day on I-269. At Getwell 6400, the number has increased 1,000 in the last year. Uh, also, at, uh, Getwell and I-269, we got 1,300 daily trips for westbound traffic on to Getwell from I-269, and 1,400 for eastbound traffic from I-269. Uh, the reason why a C4 would work here, and again, this is not a truck stop, it is, the purpose of it is to provide for modern, attractive, and efficient retail located on the main arterial roadways. This is a main arterial roadway. The landscaping buffer are extremely compatible and pleasing. If you would go back to the Alex Travel Center, and we can also, in your, in the app, in our application, shows the landscaping plan. The design is for the flow of, as we discussed a few seconds ago, was the, for the flow of traffic. It fully complies with the traffic access control requirements for C4 zoning. The location of the driveways does not interfere with free movement of traffic or interferes with the right-of-way. And one aspect of this, the design that we're having, will create a precedent for similar, uh, develop, developments in this area. It establishes a standard for location and design of other like facilities along I-269. And for instance, like if you go into Madison and Ridgeland, you see these gas stations in the, that are brick, and that establishes a precedent to people visiting Madison. It is an upscale community like Hernando is, and that's what this city is striving to be. The zoning presently, uh, the proposed C4 would conform to the city's, uh, general development plan, and the existing zoning district classification is inappropriate. As the planning commission is very well aware, um, the character of the neighborhood has changed to justify a rezoning, and there is a public need that exists for rezoning. As we've spelled out in our Exhibit A, the agricultural zoning predates the existence of I-269, and the subject property was annexed by the city in September of 22. I-269 being an intercontinental interstate opened in the fall of 2018. And as I stated previously, there's 33 average thousand trips per day at, past that location. The MDOT traffic volumes, as I discussed previously, show that there's increased traffic at Getwell and I-269. Uh, also, we've had several rezonings of Bakerfield West Commercial. The C4 PUD was approved in August of 2020. Williams Ridge, uh, planned unit of development was developed in July of 18, and the collections of Getwell was approved last year. Also in the area, there's a C4, uh, in the residential area of Pleasant Hill and McEnville. And also, if you go down just one exit, we have a C2 at, uh, Tolahoma. Most importantly, at I-55 and I-269, we have the M1 zoning of Consolidate Wholesale Grocers, Associated Wholesale Grocers, and that's 200 trucks a day. Having this C4 there does not increase the flow of traffic, because the traffic has already been there, particularly with this large M1 development. In addition, there are no spots in Hernando for people to refuel their diesel farm, commercial, or recreational equipment such as RVs. The nearest location that I could, in traveling, is Pilot and, um, in, um, there's a Pilot on a branch and a Pilot in Holly Springs. Uh, the international corridor has brought commercial traffic, and there is legitimate need for fueling services. Also, the immediate location to I-69 will divert this commercial traffic from the city core of commerce. We don't have to worry about commercial vehicles coming here. This will serve as a prime location, allowing in and out access immediately. And the surrounding community does need a, of stored supply of gas and diesel fuel at the ongoing growth, construction, and development. Finally, I know the city does not want a truck stop, and this is not a truck stop. This C4 is not one. One of the expressed conditions that are prohibited are trucks stopped, overnight parking, no showers. We do not want a pilot here. As someone who's lived in the Hernando area, I would not want one. But there is a need, a legitimate need for diesel fueling in this area due to the increased traffic, uh, commercial traffic, and also the immediate adjacent M1 and C2s. The benefit of this proposed development is threefold. One, it establishes a precedent for the location of these facilities north of I-269 and away from the city center. Second, it establishes a higher level of design for such facilities, thereby raising the developments, the development cost for those attempting to enter the market later. And finally, it reduces the need for the goods and services this facility will provide, which is a vital argument, and that future proposals will have to meet for these facilities. Considering there's an M1 right up the road, and there's a C2 immediately adjacent at McEnville and, uh, Green Tea and Toloma Roads, the area is primed for a rezoning for a C2. A pilot could come into that area and go all the way to the Spring Court, because they have the funding to do this. This C4 enables the city to have a direct role in the planning. And, um, and I think there has been a change in the neighborhood, and there is a legitimate need for these services. Now, Nick, would you like to come and comment about the, uh, the development and how, uh, we're gonna handle, uh, city services in the short term? Thank you.
Uh, Nicholas Cronin, address 3629 College Road, South Haven, Mississippi. So there is a few things on this I wanna add, is, uh, water and sewer. Water and sewer will be onsite sewer, uh, and we will have to have well with tanks to provide, uh, fire protection for this facility. All of that will be temporary, and in the project text, it states upon, um, uh, city services being extended to this area, it is the responsibility of the owner to make the connection to the city's, uh, services. So it's not the responsibility of the city to pay for this, uh, property to connect in the future upon the, uh, water and sewer. future upon the water sewer being extended to the north side of sixty-nine. One other thing we did is, is as you saw in the video with the truck routes, is we wanted to not only put it in the text that no truck parking is allowed, but we also wanted to make sure we designed a site that wouldn't allow it. So everything is curb and gutter, so there's nowhere that some a truck can pull off into the, you know, there's no gravel parking lot, no nowhere else. If all movements, we shrunk the parking lot down to a minimal size. So we ran the movements and then we shrunk the curb in. You can see on our south side and our east side that where we have bump outs in the curb, we bumped it out just because those trucks need that extra room for that movement and then we shrunk the aisle back in. So we didn't want to leave any extra parking lot where where it's not needed. And be glad to answer any other questions y'all might have and I'm sure Jody would too as well.
So if a driver, truck, eighteen wheeler driver pulled in and wanted to go into the store or something, they would just sit at the tank at the pump until they went in and got in.
That's correct.
And then from there. As far as the owner managed, I guess, water and sewage systems, I mean, what how how long does something like that for a commercial facility like this, I mean, is that?
That's standard in all this particular owner owns multi owns, I think, eighteen or nineteen facilities with just about all of them with on-site sewer and water wells.
Something that can be managed.
Yeah, that's a standard health department process and that's why the site's so big to allow for that. So he the actual rezoning application is for four points of an acre, but he's buying five and a half acres.
You say to get into somewhere that's not maintained, but it sounds like.
It's it's yeah. We do on-site sewer systems facilities like this all the time. I think I've designed five this year.
So I'm assuming there's some type of improvements to Getwell for like a turn lane or something.
Of course, that would require all coordination with MDOT, but any requirements made by MDOT, we would obviously have to adhere to that.
Getwell Getwell is managed by MDOT?
Well, it's right there at this point. We're we would have to coordinate with MDOT on that and we require a MDOT permit for that connection because their right of way comes up to right around where our drive's at.
Any other question for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in support or against this application, please come forward and state your name
My name's Ken Ballmer. My address is eight sixty Getwell, three eight six five one Hernando. It all sounds pretty good, you know, he's he's a lawyer, I'm not. But I am a resident and this proposed zoning, I looked up C four, I didn't know what C four was. It is a heavy, heavy traffic zoning. I live directly across the street from this. I have nineteen point six acres. I've been there for thirty-eight years. Anytime I want diesel fuel, I just go up to Pleasant Hill Road and there's a convenience store just right down down right in the road. It's not a problem. I have tractors, I have bulldozers, I have backhoes and I use diesel and also use regular fuel, sometimes unleaded fuel from my lawn mower and things like that. It is very convenient off I sixty-nine because it's very close to it and there will be traffic coming I sixty-nine, just heading north and picking up gas, whatever, and getting back on the expressway probably. They're going to have a sign probably up there to say, you know, gas, you know, food, whatever, I don't know what they're going to have, but it's going to be a it's like a really large convenience store with a lot of fueling kept in it is also. The area has been pretty rural for all the time that I've been there and it'd be a drastic change to the area where I live, my my wife and I live. I know inevitably there are going to be changes coming because that's the way progress, you know, goes. I'm just not really sure that we need a very large convenience store slash fuel mart there on Getwell Road. That's about all I had. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
My name's Mike Wiseman. I live at Leavenhurst, Getwell, Mississippi, three eight six five one. We're actually still in Mesbit over. And I live two doors down from this gentleman.
Thank you.
Yeah, so my concern is what where's the initial, the driveway where you're talking about them coming in, how far away from the highway is it from the from the exit ramp?
This is it's just, I don't know the exact footage, I would guess.
Okay, so the state says you gotta be thirteen hundred feet from the exit. Are you that far? Because if you are, you're right in front of my house.
We're not thirteen hundred feet, any any access would be.
Okay, so you got special permission then, right? And here's here's the other thing I got a problem with if 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 that section of the road is a responsibility of T dot, they need to be in on this right now and we need to be riding that road right now. The traffic and I'm sorry, sir, you up with that thing in, the traffic's going to increase going north. At six thirty in the morning, between six thirty and seven thirty in the morning, my brother and I cannot get my brother lives next door to him, we can't get out. We we literally have to take a chance to get out. Today, coming up here at four five forty-five again, you gotta take you just gotta take you just gotta gun it to get out. It's a poor and we don't need something else there that's going to cause more problems for us until now, I'm like, I agree, eventually all this is going to happen, but we need the infrastructure in place, we need the sewer in place, we need the water in place and and well and also what it's going to do is it's going to depreciate the value of my land because we don't have sewer. We were annexed in in two thousand eight and didn't know we were annexed in until we were told by the city, hey, by the way, you gotta pay taxes. In in the annexation plan, it said eight years, you get all the services. We don't have sewer. To this day, we don't have sewer and they say they're not going to put it in until the developer brings it over from McEnville. And we've tried and tried and tried. Now, once you get that sewer over there, I don't know is that I'm in, you know, I would be I would not be in favor of anything because then my land will be just as valuable as this piece of property. And I also have have questions about the environmental impact of of the septic system and the water and all that that they're going to pull. And how long is it going to be before they do tap in? Well, it's going to be however long the city if Hernando decides it's going to take get a sewer over. So there's a lot of problems. This this gentleman said that they're not going to have nozzles big enough for trucks. Well, you're not going to have any trucks. He takes a one-inch nozzle. If it's not one-inch nozzles out there, they ain't going to pull them down there and fill up. So I I question whether he knows what he's talking about as far as nozzle size. The other thing is you you don't know truckers partner because they gonna park up there right now. Y'all pull y'all running out there tonight and we got trucks parking on the exit and entrance ramps right there at Getwell, two and three deep. So they're going to pull it out of there and they're going to run right over on the on the exit ramp and they're going to park whether it's on that property or not. Here's another problem, we already can hear everything that happens on I two sixty-nine right now. Jake breaks, big trucks, sirens, you know, I've been here all my life. Matter of fact, my my mom and dad bought our land from the Andersons when I was seven years old. And I thought we were good neighbors, but obviously the good neighbor policy is gone because this gentleman over here drove some land on Southwest corner. You know what he did? He ain't even from here. He called me and asked me, what did I think about the development he's going to put in? And I appreciated him calling and discussing it with me and asking me, what does he need to do for me to make this a good deal? I have yet to get a call from anybody and what will make this a good deal would be to get the sewer and get the road from two sixty-nine all the way to Getwell, five lanes and four lanes. We don't have the infrastructure. Here's the other thing, we already got seventeen convenience stores in the city of Hernando, actually eighteen now and got two more on the way. That's a big twenty-something stores within the city limits of Hernando. And yes, you didn't know what you're talking about, but because you can go right over there on Pleasant Hill Road and get get diesel fuel at that store over. And it's got canopy tall enough for big trucks, big trucks pulling and filling up. So I I just I don't think we're ready. And I don't think I'm getting driven after. We don't have the infrastructure. There's no consideration for the rest of the residents in the area. Let's get all that stuff put in there and then we can revisit it.
I'll just say a few words for the project, the Hundley Anderson, I live at two four six Toloma Road. You see gas stations at interstate intersections all across the world. This plan is conducive to the master plan for the city and the county. The design is within everything the city and county expects. There's no real reason to not approve, in my opinion. That's all I can say.
I'm Bartlett Graves, one seven seven five, Clare Circle South, Hernando, Mississippi. With the project and everything that's going on, I'll work here in Hernando, right across from Kroger. As of as of right now, you can't even go down Commerce. I mean, it's just slam full at five o'clock, it takes thirty minutes to get to the red light. From my understanding is with the school being built in on McEnville, the whole goal is is to expand. Hernando to widen it to get to get the traffic where it's not so conducive right here in the city where it is right now. And I know with this plan and everything that's been put in place and the hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been spent on the project is that we are trying that they are trying to make this like a German town in a Brandon area so that the rest of the area will move towards that. And I just know that I think the whole goal is to move the traffic outside of Hernando with the school where it is and this is just the starting, the first building block to move that way.
John Stevenson, fifteen eighty-nine Johnston Road, Hernando. I sixty-nine and Getwell is the perfect place for a gas station. In fact, we're breaking ground on one on the north, I mean, southwest corner in about forty-five days. And when we did it, the one thing we didn't do, even though we do have diesel pumps, it's impossible for a semi to pull in and gas up there. They're just diesel pumps for cars. And while the attorney here is talking about it's not going to be a truck stop, I'm reminded of an old adage, if it looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. Then my question is, is why have you specifically designed the property for basically two hundred trucks a day, as he said, is coming down from AWG? I think the only problem, I love the design of the station, I love everything about it, but that's a two-lane road coming off of I sixty-nine. I think if you don't have the diesel pumps, I'd say approve it. But that big section that's designed for large volumes of diesel trucks, to me, is a problem. And frankly, that's the only problem I see. And as someone who's fixing to put a lot of money in the ground just across the interstate, I worry about that much truck traffic negatively impacting what we're fixing today. So I would say if if the developer's willing to back the diesel pumps out, that it would make a lot of sense to me. So I mean, that'd just be something he would have to answer. But thank you, that's all I had.
Anyone else in support or against this item? The applicant have a rebuttal?
Mr. Damon, is that something y'all would consider removing the diesel pumps?
We don't have authority on that and at this time, as a client wishes to proceed with it as proposed.
Is there a motion to approve, deny or table this item?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of his rezoning request by Jody Nauman on behalf of Arthur W. Anderson, Jr., owner of the property of four point fifty-one acres identified as parcel number two zero seven eight three three zero zero zero, zero 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 two zero one, located just west of Getwell Road north, east of McEnville Road and north of Interstate two sixty-nine, situated in section thirty-three, township two south, range seven west. Current zoning A agricultural district to C four plan marshal based upon the findings one, two and three.
All right, that motion did not pass. Is there another motion that someone would like to make?
I'll make a motion to table it with maybe giving the applicant a chance to go back to the developer and talk about the removal of the of the diesel pumps. So I'll make a motion to table.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Jordan?
Yay.
Commissioner Max?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Commissioner Steen?
Hi. The motion to take the motion to table this item passes.
So.
Until.
That vote was to January, Nick did just kind of peep over and say they do know it's that is a stipulation of their application that they need to have. I don't know if that changes anything for the motion to deny, but he did want me to pass that along. Yeah, that yeah.
We've been advised not to remove it.
I think the motion's already been voted on, hasn't it?
The only thing would be to, I guess, renew it and then I guess if y'all can address it with the.
Do denial and you can appeal it to them.
If that's what you're asking for, denial.
Yes, we've been advised not to remove it. So I hate to say it, but I must say it, denial is probably an appeal is the proper thing not to waste y'all's time.
No, that's fair. That's fair.
I mean, I'll say, I mean, I just let me get pounded with sarcastic. The design is great. I don't have a problem with design, understanding concern for Mr. Sullivan and the neighbors on the diesel trucks. I think that is going to be a problem. I mean, I'm not saying that the property shouldn't be a some sort of commercial property, but it's got. but there's gotta be some other uses it could have other than just one particular use. I mean, it's just, I don't see the public need for it personally. But, I mean, if he's rather having denial, I'll make a motion.
So, uh, the motion to approve to table it, and that's just gonna kick the can further down the road. They already said they're not gonna reconsider, then we're denied, then it puts them a couple of months out.
Can he just withdraw his motion? And we need to vote on it again, and then...
I think we probably can hold on to it again.
That's something I would have to look into, whether or not they can withdraw it now or they have to wait till tabling to go ahead and move forward on their original application.
You can't appeal the table, obviously.
I think the board can reconsider a motion to withdraw the motion to table.
Yeah, if you can.
I'll make a motion to withdraw. I mean, I feel like it probably been appropriate thing for you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to withdraw my last motion.
Okay, so we'll run through that vote, and then we'll come back with the...
We covered the bases on this one, I think.
One and nine papers.
So is there a second to approve or to withdraw of his, of his motion to table?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Jordan?
This is... Okay, okay, yeah, yay.
Commissioner Max?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Commissioner Skene?
Hi.
Okay, so the motion to withdraw, the table motion has been approved. So we starting over from scratch. And we have a motion to approve, deny, or table this item.
I'll make a motion to recommend denial of rezoning request by Jody Nauman on behalf of Arthur W. Anderson Jr., owner of the property of 4.15 acres identified as parcel number 20783300000201, located at just west of Getwell Road North, east of McInville Road and north of I-269, situated in Section 33 Township 2 South, range seven west from current zoning A Agricultural District to C for Plan Commercial, based upon the following findings, one, two, three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Jordan?
Nay.
Commissioner Max?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Commissioner Skene?
Hi.
I think the motion to deny this item passes, and that recommendation is being forwarded on to the Maryland Board of Alderman for you all.
On the seventeenth, yes, sir, next Tuesday.
All right, the next item is PL 1861 Tulane and I-269 C2.
I need to accuse myself on this one.
Hey, I don't, I think that's gonna knock us out of a corner.
So we did check with Josie, with Keith being here as a, as a member, that would get us to the corner four.
Okay, okay.
What's that? And this is a recommendation, so like, nothing, that was actually a decision, it's just a recommendation.
I-269 C2, request for rezoning of 18.75 acres from A to C2. The subject property is located on the southwest corner of Tulane Road and the I-269 interchange in Section 33 Township 2 South, range eight west. Ben Johnson representing the owner. Mr. Kados, will you please present the planning staff report and comment?
Yes, sir, this is PL 1861, the request is rezonate 18.75 acres to the C2 Highway Commercial District. Uh, this property is the southwest corner of Tulane Road and I-269 interchange in the section township and range that you've mentioned. The future land use map for the general development plan identifies this property as activity master plan commercial. Uh, similar to the last application, um, this does include nodes and interchanges along the highways, uh, 269 and 304 corridor. It specifically does not include distribution centers. The proposal of C2 would be in accordance with that designation of massive plan, master plan commercial. Uh, the three criteria for approval or denial are the same as the last application, how this proposed amendment would conform to the general development plan, existing zoning district classification of property is inappropriate or improper, and what changes in the area have occurred in vicinity of the property in question that were not anticipated by the general development plan, and has substantially altered the basic character of the area, which make the proposed amendment of the zoning district map appropriate. And the applicant did provide responses to each of those. Unlike the last application, this is a C2, so it's a base zoning district. Um, our design regulations would still apply, uh, but there is no plan text document to go along with it. So the base zoning is C2, would be subject to all the full design regs and the subdivision regulations when it comes to that point, but right now it's just a, a base zone C2. I did provide motions to approve, deny, or table. And, um, as you can see in the staff report of the survey, the 18.75 acres roughly follows the ditch that's on the property, so, um, everything on the northeast side of that ditch, um, up to the state and, um, city right of ways is what this property encompasses. There is a large power line easement on the northern side where the energy transmission line has come through. Um, and then all access would be subject to city requirements, but at this point, we don't have that information since it is just, um, a C2 zoning designation. Um, Ben Johnson's here tonight representing the owner of the property, and I'm available if you got any questions.
Chairman Hawkins, Commissioner Ben Johnson with Randall Commercial Group, 850 Insight Park, University of Mississippi, or Oxford, Ole Miss campus is where our office is. And, uh, I'm representing the prospective buyer of this property, 18.75 acres. Uh, my client is Wade Incorporated, uh, who owns the John Deere dealership currently here. Uh, the, the plan used for this property would be a new John Deere dealership at that location. Um, but as of right now, we are under contract, going through due diligence, and, uh, one item that we have that's a contingency for us to purchase the property is that it's rezoned from Ag to C2, otherwise we don't have, we're not really able to move forward without that. So, uh, anyway, uh, but obviously an interstate access right there, um, uh, you know, this is an existing, uh, member of the Hernando community, and, uh, as Austin mentioned, the new location would be subject to C2 regu-, regulations. And, uh, I guess compared to the other, uh, John Deere dealerships that they have throughout the delta, this would be the Taj Mahal of their location, so to speak, uh, being all brick or block, as I understand it. But, uh, I, I'll keep it short and sweet, I feel like, uh, you know, that this is in the, as Austin mentioned as well, the future land use for this to be commercial retail. And, uh, there, there is, uh, we do feel like we're gonna be able to fit on this site, although there is some concern about, uh, initially about, about five acres of the site is in that big, uh, energy easement, so, and it's also sort of an unusual shape. Um, I don't know if you have the survey on there to pull up, but, uh, typically for, um, so we're kind of pinched down, but, uh, typically we need at least ten to twelve acres, uh, for this proposed development. So we're a, a single use end user in that case. So, um, anyway, uh, but I think, I guess I'll open it up to you guys if you have any questions.
So with that easement, you guys just won't be able to build underneath it, but y'all could use it for parking or something like that, right?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Yes, my understanding as well, correct.
I think it's perfect for that.
I think it's, yeah, way better than a gas station or a hotel, or mini storage.
Yeah, I'm kind of relieved to see the room clear.
You might do it, yeah. If it, if it, uh, for some reason Wade had issues, Wade went out. What are, what are the other C2 options? I, I, I looked for my, I didn't see a book up here.
Well, it, it does exclude convenience store pumps, and so that's required to have a conditional use.
It's kind of what I was...
It's, C2 mainly is geared towards retail, commercial, big box, grocery, things like that. Uh, office would be allowable. Uh, mini storage is a conditional use, and so it's, it's your basic retail uses.
I don't have them memorized.
Yeah, I think I remember when they were in here about their fence variance. There was plans, that's why they were kind of wanting to vary, and they had plans to build out that way. But I remember that being brought up, what if you do?
We, we've had a hard time finding a site, honestly, so it's been taking a little while.
Any other question for that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Anyone in support against this item? Is there a motion to approve, deny, or table this item?
I make a motion to recommend approval to board Alderman request by Ben Johnson of the rezoning of 18.75 acre parcel of land from its current zoning in the A Agricultural District to C2 Commercial Highway District. Subject property parcel number 20883300000101 is located at the southwest corner of Tulane Road and I-269 interchange in Section 33 Township 2 South, range eight, based upon the following findings, one through three.
Second.
Commissioner Jordan?
Hi.
Commissioner Max?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Motion to approve this item?
We do need a vote from, I would think, Commissioner Hawkins. I mean, you have a majority, but...
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you need a vote. Commissioner Hawkins?
Motion to approve this item passes?
So I guess there's a B, would there be the seventeenth also?
Yes, it's also the seventeenth, so next Tuesday, go back from...
Yes, that's correct. Thank you all so much.
Appreciate y'all's time. It might be the fastest rezoning you've ever done.
You, you got some good use, I didn't know.
Yeah, I didn't know.
That's great, I think everybody was gonna leave here then. I think tonight's the first night you got the vote in the hotel.
I know. We tabled it, then we withdrew it again.
All right, the next item is PL 1862 Delta Landing Phase Two Residential. Request for final plan approval for Delta Landing Phase Two subdivision, which is sixteen lots on 3.37 acres. The subject property is located on the southwest side of McInville Road, south of Pleasant Hill in Section 31 Township 2 South, range seven. Nick Kurigan, representing owner of the property. Mr. Kados, will you please present the planning department report and comments?
Yes, sir, this is PL 1862, request is for Phase Two, uh, Delta Landing Residential Subdivision. There's sixteen lots and two common open spaces, uh, on this phase. It's the existing zoning's PUD, uh, it was originally Brighton Village PUD, as y'all know, was subsequently approved to the Delta Landing PUD on March 7th, 2023. Um, this phase is the attached, uh, townhomes as approved with the PUD. Um, the setbacks are listed in your staff report with the ten-foot being the minimum building separation of the, of the units. Uh, excuse me, the, the quad of units rather than the individual spaces. Um, in the back of your staff report, I've put the plat, of course, and then you can see the PUD as a whole of where this phase is and how it fits into the preliminary development plan. As you can see, this, um, this proposal identifies exactly with that preliminary, so it is substantial performance with, uh, that preliminary plat that was approved with the PUD. Um, the subdivisions, uh, conditions that you see in there are, um, our typical standard approval criteria, um, that include your sidewalks, the bonding requirements, um, and then all of the, uh, construction related, um, requirements we've got with the plats. This does, as I mentioned, I conform to that of the preliminary submittal, and this also does go in front of the Board of Alderman. This is a recommendation on the December 17th, next Tuesday's meeting. Um, and I did provide a proposed motion, um, in your staff report, uh, for your reference. Uh, Nick's here tonight representing this application, and I'm available if you got any questions.
Nicholas Corrigan, address 3629 College Road, South Haven, Mississippi. Uh, pretty straightforward, exactly as planned. This is the same type product that was in part of Phase One, just a little bit more of it.
Any question for that?
Thank you all.
Anyone support against this item? Is there a motion to approve or deny this, approve and deny or table this item?
Motion to grant final plat approval for Delta Landing Phase Two subdivision consisting of sixteen same amount of six lots and two common open spaces, 3.37 acres, west of McInville Road and south of Pleasant Hill in Section 31 Township 2 South, range seven, based upon a finding admitted, plat, final plat generally conforms to the requirements of the city's codes and ordinances. It says, "Subject to the conditions set forth in one through ten."
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jordan?
Hi.
Commissioner Max?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Commissioner Skene?
Hi.
Motion to approve this item passes? Final item of the day of this evening is PL 1863, first revision of Lot One of Anderson Minor Subdivision. Request for final plan approval for first revision of Anderson Minor Subdivision, two lots, 6.59 total acres. Robbie Jones, representing owner of the property. Mr. Kados, please present the planning staff report and comments.
Yes, sir, this is PL 1863, and the request is for first revision of Anderson Minor Subdivision. It's currently one lot on 6.59 acres. The current request is divided, um, into two lots, one lot being 3.578 acres and second lot being 3.008 acres. Um, both lots have direct access to Pleasant Hill Road, uh, with centralized water. Um, there is no sewer, uh, they're currently provided on-site systems. Um, but with the lot sizes, um, it does fit within the health department's parameters for a new home to be built on the newly created lot. Uh, the current zoning's A R, and the lots in question do meet or exceed all of the bulk requirements, as you see with setback, setbacks, lot sizes, widths, and everything. Um, and there's no flood plain on the property. Uh, Mr. Kendrick's here tonight representing the application, Robbie Jones drew the plat. Um, but if you see on the plat from Pleasant Hill Road, the proposals for an easement, um, to be shared along the property lines to come in and serve the newly created Lot One of 3.578 acres, um, and then the existing house and shop will be entirely located on Lot Two. So, um, pretty straightforward, there is, um, only four conditions on this one, since there are no sidewalks or road improvements associated with this subdivision, so those are not included. Um, everything else is just our standard criteria. That concludes my presentation, I'm available if you got any questions.
Any question, Mr. Kados? All right, would now please come forward and state your name and address.
Mark Kendrick, 219 Ottomos, Lamar, Mississippi, 38642. Uh, this is the property of my mom, Cindy Kendrick. So we're, we're looking to, uh, make it into two lots. Basically, it's, uh, me and my sister, uh, one lot, which, which, uh, currently has my mom's house on it, uh, will be left to my sister, and then the other lot, uh, will be left, the one that were, uh, that doesn't have any structure on it currently, uh, will be left to me, and we're looking at building a house on that lot, or I'm looking to build a house on that lot, uh, basically just to, um, be there to look out for my mom. My, but my dad is, this property, my mom and my, my late dad, uh, my father passed away, so we're just gonna build a house to kind of watch out for her, um, and, and that's the plan.
Any question for that? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve or deny this item?
I make a motion to grant final plat approval to first revision of Anderson Minor Subdivision, located at the south side of Pleasant Hill Road, west of Getwell, based upon a finding that the submitted plat generally conforms to all the requirements of the city's codes and ordinances, subject to the following standard conditions, one through four.
Is there a second?
Second. That's your hand.
Commissioner Jordan?
Hi.
Commissioner Max?
Hi.
Commissioner Ashworth?
Hi.
Commissioner Skene?
Hi.
Is there a motion to adjourn or adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll take that, sir.